Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes, I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
My second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have an agenda. Onto Superintendent's report, Mr. Jesse.
Thank you, Board President Wielander, other Board Directors, student representatives, students, family members, community members, and staff. I'm gonna keep it pretty short. I got a presentation coming up for the State of the District. One, I would like to just thank our student athletes for showing up today. I know that's a lot. They have very busy schedules as a typical high schooler, and their parents are showing up at the same time. I'd love to recognize you and your efforts. Being a scholar athlete is a serious commitment that I think leads to a lot of really good, positive social skill development, how to play on a team, and while also getting your schoolwork done. Not always easy, so really glad that they're here. One, I really just, yesterday was Veterans Day. Want to recognize all of our staff and our family members that served in the Armed Forces. We have a number of staff who did serve in the various sections of the Armed Forces, so. I also, it's a good time to recognize our NJROTC program, something I'm very proud of. They win a lot of awards, play a lot of things. I love going to their events. And I think when you have almost 100 students that are committed to doing that at the high school level and all the things that they have to do to prepare, and a lot of them go on to one of the fields. And I just, I think it's just a reminder about why it's so important to celebrate being American and all that they give to honoring those who have fallen and who have represented the United States of America. So, thank you so much for the NJROTC program. I know they're not here, hopefully they hear this. And also again to all, especially all of our staff who have served, and I'm sure we'll have many students who move on. So with that, that will conclude my comments. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Onto community comments. As part of the regular school board meeting, the Board welcomes community members to make public comments in person and/or by phone as conditions allow. Please see the full script with call-in instructions and guidelines for community comments displayed on the screen above. And first up will be Amy Devon.
Hello. Sir, I'm Amy Devon, a science teacher over at Shelton High School. But the role I'm here for today is I'm co-director for our fall play. Christina Lawson is over at the pack with Joey Seward running our rehearsal because we open this weekend. I'm really bad about reaching out to get onto the agenda, so I'm here with one of our actors to tell you a little bit about our play.
Yeah, this year we're doing the play that goes wrong. It's a comedy. It has about seven cast members in it, not including our stagehands. And we're doing it for two weekends, and our opening night is this Friday.
So, if you guys are available and able, we'd love for you guys to come. Marion is part of cast, Collin or?
Haversham.
Haversham. We had so many kids audition, we were able to fully cast. Two, we were able to double cast the show. So we have one cast performing this weekend and the other cast performing next weekend. If you guys are able, we're performing Friday at 7:00, and then Saturday, there's a matinee at 2:00 and an evening performance at 7:00 both weekends. So, if you guys are able and you want to see a really funny show, you'll get to see Marion next weekend. You'll see our other cast this weekend. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Donnie Rooks.
Hi, my name's Donnie Rooks. I have two kids that attend Shelton High School. I saw something that really bothered me today, that apparently a teacher wore a shirt to school, a Charlie Kirk shirt, and apparently was told that it offended people and was made to put tape over the name Charlie Kirk. And I think it is absolutely appalling that we are, that we have a school district where if people are offended, we capitulate to them to almost no end, it seems like. You know, instead of raising students and children and having staff that are resilient and teach our students that they will see things in the world that bother them that they may not agree with and having conversations, instead, they capitulate and make this teacher cover up a name. A name of someone whose only hope in this world was to create more dialogue between people and was assassinated for doing just that, talking. Wasn't, didn't harm people, said things that people didn't like. And I don't see how I can vote yes on a levy to give more money to people that don't seem to want to actually build resilient students. So at this time, I see no, I see no hope for me voting yes on your levy or even being open to the idea of giving you more money until you change some of these policies and instruct your staff to do just that. You know, they said that it was multiple people that were offended, and I don't really know what that means, but, you know, my son sees a lot of things throughout the day that he doesn't like. So does that mean that if he sees something he doesn't like, he comes home, he talks to me, and maybe I don't like it, and then I can call Bruce Kipper and I can get whatever that is taken away or taken down? I don't think that's right. So, I hope this is something you look into and I hope it's something that you guys fix. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Jewitt.
It's been a minute. Good to see you guys. Gonna chat about exactly the same thing. It's in a podcast labeled "Unbelievable." Can you believe it? Unbelievable. I'm here tonight to address two deeply concerning issues with our district: transparency and public records and censorship within our schools. First, let's talk about public records requests. When you have a board member that asks for information from the district office and the admin, and they don't get it, and then they have to fill out their own public records request to get that data, makes me raise an eyebrow like Mr. Wielander just did. It's unacceptable, okay? You should be transparent with the information without having to do a public records request. So when I leave tonight, I'm sure that the admin office is gonna get several of them from me. And they'll go public, absolutely. So transparency isn't optional. It's a legal and ethical duty. When a school district refuses to provide information, it undermines public trust and signals that there's something to hide. We cannot claim to serve our students and community while operating behind closed doors. Second, and equally troubling, is what occurred this afternoon. A teacher was directed to place tape over the name Charlie Kirk with the Freedom Foundation. So, whether or not anyone agrees with Charlie Kirk or the Freedom Foundation is irrelevant. The question is, who decided that one political or ideology name must be covered up where others are allowed to remain? Who made the call? On what authority? Because that's not education. That's viewpoint discrimination. In a public school, students and teachers should be encouraged to think critically and not be shielded from names or ideas that someone in the administration finds uncomfortable. Once we start censoring one side, we've abandoned fairness, open discourse, and the fundamental principles of education. The Board must demand accountability. Who directed that censorship? Why was it done? And what steps will be taken to ensure that it never happens again? The Shelton, these are a couple of things I'd like to see. Is that the Shelton School District will honor all lawful requests without having to do a public records request. That no staff member or student will be subjected to ideological censorship under the district's authority. Our schools belong to the community and the truth, transparency, and open exchange of ideas that are not negotiable. Pretty, pretty cut and dry, but take a look. Unbelievable, Brandy Cruz. About 45 minutes in, okay? There's probably 1,200 comments now and probably another 300 on the Shelton side of it. You guys screwed up. So if that was you, Wes, Jesse, good luck.
Okay. Onto item number five, Reports and Recognition, 5.01, Shelton Athletics Recognition, Scott Chamberlain.
I'll be your test guy. Check, check. Good evening. Thanks for having us here tonight. I brought a couple of programs with us. We just are wrapping up the fall seasons, getting ready to start winter sports here on Monday. At the junior high and the middle school, we've already started winter sports. But at the high school, we've had some programs that are having some success and we want to bring them up. So the first program I want to bring up is our volleyball program. Come on up, ladies. While they're coming up here, I'll just kind of tell you. I traveled to Boise this weekend to visit a relative. And when I got back yesterday, I traveled down to Vancouver to watch our lady volleyball team play in the first round of the District 438 Tournament. And it was an exciting night. They won 3 to 1, advancing to tomorrow's game when we get to go to Prairie High School. At this point, what we need to do is win two more matches to qualify for state. It's not a traditional double elimination. It looks a little different. But they're gonna travel to Prairie tomorrow and hopefully have the same energy they had last night. It was fun to watch, other than the third set, ladies. But that's okay. It happens, right? That's why we play five. But it was a great night, and they did a great job, and it's been a great season. Congratulations and good luck, and thank you for a great season so far. Let's give them a round of applause. Superintendent Jesse mentioned the time commitment. These ladies, last night, were on a bus for probably, what, five hours total? And then they're here tonight, and then tomorrow they'll get to be on a van for probably more like four hours. So, anyways. The next group of people I'd like to bring up is our state cross-country participants. So if they would come up, they participated at the state cross-country meet on Saturday in Pasco. It's funny when I start telling coaches that we're gonna bring these people here, inviting them, and they're like, "Do we have to speak?" So if you ever want them to speak, just let me know. But Coach Schultz and Coach Lowe, this season, had a great season, had quite a few kids out. I'll tell you a couple of things before we get to these individuals. This is not exact, but I know that Board Member Wielander always talks about academic, team academics. Our girls' cross-country team had a 3.9 something. I don't remember off the top of my head. But what we don't know is we don't know what the results are. They haven't shared those with us yet. At one point, I remember walking down to Coach Schultz's classroom and saying, "Are you sure that these are the five girls? Because we're probably in contention for a state championship." I'm gonna assume we didn't get that because they presented it last weekend. But that's pretty impressive. I want to say it was a 3.94. I don't want to quote that though, because I don't remember off the top of my head. But academically, our girls' team did great, and our boys' team had a very good GPA as well. These individuals that are up here, we're missing one. Addison Aldrich is not with us. She's traveling still from Pasco. I guess she took a long route to get back. But on the girls' side, we have Madison Lomeyer and Haley Nadeau, and then Addison Aldrich, who traveled over to Pasco and represented the high climbers in the state cross-country meet at Sunwillows Golf Course. I asked them if they wanted me to name their placings, but what I don't know is how many athletes? Coach, do you know how many athletes were in the race? Probably 250 runners, and there are three girls. Madison placed the highest at 158, Haley at 178, and Addison at 181. And then Tracy Bartholomew represented the boys for the second year in a row, correct? Yeah, and he placed 152nd. So, congratulations, great season. Go ahead, you guys are good. And once again, we're just starting into fall sports. We do have one that we withheld that we learned about Saturday, but we weren't able to pull that together with Veterans Day and bring them here, and I didn't really want to try to surprise anybody. So, I'll be back here soon with another success from our fall sports. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, guys. Serious. That's super neat. Item 5.02, our budget update with Clinton Sherman.
First, I just wanted to thank you. Is this working? He's not gonna be here when I say it, but Coach Schultz ran past my house in what to me looked like a dead sprint, but he was like, "See you there tonight!" And it was so fast, so that was impressive. Tonight, I want to walk through a quick budget update as we do every meeting. This graph has shifted a little bit since last, but the real news is, well, two things. One, you'll see a solid line forming. We're gonna continue to have the projected line there. Those dotted lines are gonna remain all year. Last year, I was updating it, and the line was taking over, but now you'll see how close we are to our projections over time. That's the goal of that. So we'll have a solid line showing with actuals and the dotted line of what we earlier projected. Again, we outperformed our initial ending fund balance for last year, which was negative 2.2. We had negative 1.8. We understand that's negative still, but that created a cushion and a buffer for us that we, our ending fund balance will now be around $2 million instead of 1.6. All things being equal, we still are uncertain with what's going on federally, if more cuts are coming. Enrollment can always kind of be up in the air, so we'll make adjustments, and this will be reflected on this chart that we'll see over and over again. I also wanted to let you know that our apportionment advance was awarded today. It's a little coming in November, which is when we need it. There was seven or eight advances done, commissioned to the state this year. I think the high one was like $20 million. So us asking for 1.7 was not a huge deal in the eyes of the state right now, because there's, like I said, this is statewide issue and pretty large dollars are happening and moving. And that's all I had for the update. October enrollment we'll have at the next meeting, and then that's all I have. Questions you have for me?
No, I don't need anybody?
We'll keep it coming. Yep.
Thanks. Levy renewal options, Clinton Sherman.
Great. We talked quite a bit at the last meeting around how the levy is a replacement levy, how it's not a new tax, how Shelton has a longstanding history of passing a levy. I only went back 25 years, and they all passed those 25 years. How McCleary reduced the local control, how the tax rate used to be above 450. Now the cap is 250. How the current tax rate will be 225 is what we're looking at now. And when the community passes the levy, it brings our tax dollars back in the community for around $2.7 over $3 million, so it was projected to. And that the levy touches every student. It has a positive impact all over the place. We walked through all the different areas, teachers, counselors, nurses, just athletics, all the stuff that was happening up here earlier. And an increase, we did a little exercise about how an increase in your property value does not automatically mean we collect more taxes. That's just not how it works. You guys will set a rate, we'll calculate an amount, and that amount will be the amount that's collected no matter what happens to their assess valuations. So, in summary, that was, I think, 15 slides from last time into two slides tonight, because we spent about a half hour talking about it last time. This is what it looks like, and I just wanted to open it up for you guys have that discussion on where you wanted to set the rate later in the meeting and in the board packet. If you took a look at it, it had like 27 rate, 20, all these are placeholders. So once you make your decision here, I'll hop on my computer, update that resolution, and bring it back to you later in the meeting. So, I just want to open to your own discussion around what you guys are thinking and feeling.
I know that the 225 that you've got up there, that kind of keeps us where we're going, barring nothing bad happening ever at the state, the Fed, and anything else. I also look at that I would like to get us to a better positive fund balance that is also more consistent with our current policy, which is above, obviously, where we need to be. You guys, I know I've reached out. I would like to do 236, and that would put us right at $9,027. So I don't know how you guys feel about that, looking at this sheet, but that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I think there's this balancing act right now between what really we need, which is probably ideally that 250 number, and what is doable in this climate and economy and in our community. If we're just being honest, we saw two levies fail this last week. And so, our goal is to be out of these financial troubles as fast as we can while maintaining reasonable levy rates, because this is not a new tax. So I appreciate your recommendation, and I see that 236 number as kind of in-between those places and hopefully something that the community can get behind without putting too much pressure on each household. Because as you pull back, if we don't support our school districts, the fallout is so much more significant than what we saw last year going into the budget cuts. So I support that number.
And I agree with both of you. I know we've talked about this quite a bit. We don't want to add an extra burden to our community, and so I don't want to go to that top rate, even though we could use those funds. It is very concerning that two similar communities, which would be North Mason and Yelm, did not pass their levies, and I believe it was either the second or third time. Third time for Yelm, third time for North Mason as well, second time. And I know people in those communities and the impacts that those have. We have these wonderful sports programs. We saw two of them tonight, where our athletes are doing really well academically and balancing getting to even post-regular season success. And those programs get impacted 100% by levies not passing. So that is really concerning to me. But I also know that if we just stick with the same rate that we've had, that with these looming funding cuts from both the state and the Fed, that that's where I am in agreement with a more middle-of-the-line approach, where it is above that but not the top amount. So I would agree also with the 236.
Thank you for your comments. I agree on the same rate area, and I'm just really hopeful that with all the efforts from our staff and going out throughout the community and really putting the information out there and helping share with families and our community members that the levy is really important to the basic functioning of our district and.
Well, it isn't even the basics. It's the stuff that really makes a difference. We're watching a cross-country team with a 3.9 GPA. I've been here after a nurse has literally saved lives, and we cannot afford to lose these programs, so we have to pass this levy. I think this is a conservative number that gets us where we need to be, but it's not all the way to the top, so.
Yeah, and I think as we go into this, we're all available for those questions. Clinton will answer any question about any financial thing. There's never been a locked door, or you can't know that, in my experience with him. In fact, eagerly wants to talk about numbers, maybe more than you want to talk about them. And so, I appreciate the transparency at the district level, but an invitation particularly to those listening online or later, please reach out with those questions. So, there are frustrations that you can have at the district level, but this is an avenue to keep funding our students. And this is probably not that way to voice disappointment in other areas. This is about keeping our basic school needs going, and it would radically change the district should we not fund this.
Yeah, to clarify that, isn't it about a $10 million loss if we do not pass this levy?
Yeah, it would be, it'll end up being, if you forecast it out, $10 to $12 million, because LEA will be $3 million next collection period for it, where it now is only 2.7, so it's actually gonna go up a little. So yeah, it'll be $10 to $12 million loss. It will, it's a catastrophic amount of money to lose from a system like ours, our size, for sure.
Does that include equalization, or is equalization?
It does, yeah. Yeah, the levy rate itself, the levy amount itself would be roughly $9 million and then $3 million from LEA, or levy equalization. Also, anecdotally, I spent maybe 15 minutes on the phone with the family answering questions the last week, and it was the highlight of my week. So I'm happy to spend time with folks and provide information.
Okay, I would take a motion.
You don't need a motion for this yet.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I'll go draft the resolution, and you'll approve the resolution later in the meeting.
Okay.
I was gonna say, it's not in discussion and action items.
Everybody good with 236 then?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, 236, thank you, sir.
I will go do that.
All right.
Thank you. Of course.
Okay. Now for the State of the District with Mr. Jesse.
Again, wait a little. Is it working now? Is it working? Sorry, I put this echo in here, so it's hard to tell if it's even on. All right, great. A lot less people here all of a sudden. Anyway, so every year, we get together and present what's going on for the Shelton School District. I think it's a really excellent opportunity to really kind of summarize what's going on for us. We get lost in these little issues. We have, obviously, the levy is a huge issue, and so we're like, "All right, let's take a couple steps back, and let's look at what's going on for the Shelton School District, and in particular, what are the experiences our students are having?" This is about the students we're serving. They're here, our reps. We have them here, and so I want to make sure we capture some of our history, what's going on now, and some things going on in the future. So with that, I want to get us going. So we've had, prior to COVID, a lot of our graphs usually go back. If we get any more information, you can't squeeze it into a slide and make it visible. So go back to '17, '18, and there was a lot going on. I mean, there was a bond passed. I mean, this building itself, right? So a lot of our facilities, the community came through, wanted to invest further in the education and the experiences for our students, and having nice facilities is obviously part of that. I know for myself, playing on a really bad gym floor is never that much fun. Improper lighting, we have to worry about things like leaky roofs. I mean, some of the students I know at SHS could easily tell me about when the floor heaters are not working, right? So we want a facilities and technology and all those other things, right? Because those things do get wrapped up into those bonds. So, thank you so much for the community for that. We also took off in our academies model all the way back then, so that was something that I'm gonna highlight a little bit more on. But we started it, it moved through, and really changed about how services were going to be provided for students. Instead of kind of thinking about your own experiences in life, you don't have it isolated into one content area. So it's a cross-content experience, also with an applied aspect. So if you're wanting to go to the health sciences, for example, that experience is that like, "Oh, I'm just gonna take biology, chemistry, or physics, or environmental science, and go through and just have my isolated experience." Now I can take courses that blend itself to looking at health sciences and what is it to work in a lab in the health industry? What would that mean for me to draw blood, or have things, or safety tips? Also, some of the basics, right, that's fine, at the same time doing the science. So we can able to wrap that experience around as students are doing that, and they can do projects, and they can do internships. And I think that's really powerful for the experiences students have now. Those COVID years were something special, but the bond came through, built buildings. It was, that's awfully a nice time to finish some things up for us. We also launched Cedar High School, right? I hear it's still pretty popular, right, Alan? Oh, yeah, big cheerleader here. And even when I got here in '21, '22, they're like, "Oh, Cedar, why do we have a third high school?" And I had some wonderings myself. If you go to Cedar and you see what's going on, you can really. If you go to Cedar and you see what's going on, you can really see that it is a different experience. It's project, truly project-based learning, very, again, cross-content. And then they also have this, since it is positive-based learning, they do a lot of teamwork in that. So they kind of, it's very much like a family, kids have to work together in a smaller setting, and it feels really intimate for them, and some of their connections, obviously, they do a lot of stuff around the environment, too. They've won some awards, so I think that's excellent. And then the Met Academy opened, we're here for that kickoff, one can only, has to go there to see, be in awe. We kicked off our strategic plan in twenty-two, twenty-three. We have four particular focus areas, that's really the basis of this particular presentation. Really wanted to say, hey, we are focused on a high-quality literacy, how are we doing on that? College and career readiness, what are we doing to support our students' graduation and ninth grade on track? Effective educators and leaders, what's the professional development, the things that we're trying to do to develop, obviously, our leaders and our educators? And then the last one is safe and welcoming environment, thinking about attendance and discipline. So those are really the traditional measures we have for us, we've been focused on it. We're in our fourth year for this strategic plan. I can't believe I'm saying that, I'm in my fifth year here in the district. And it leads to wonderful classroom experiences, all the increases that we have in climbing literacy scores, which I will be covering up. So I think it's just good to go back. When people invest and they kind of, you know, you forget about, everything is so much in the here and now, what is going on today, here's my issue, here's my thing, forget about that all the way back, even just to seventeen, eighteen, there was investments made in the Shelton School District. And along the way, those investments started to build and change the experiences our students had to what we have today. And I think that bores out into the, right into the data itself. One more thing, I just want to kind of go back since twenty-twenty-one, I mean, COVID is a natural benchmark, a lot of things in education, K-12 education changed. Prior to our strategic plan, we had a hundred percent graduation goal, so we didn't have a comprehensive strategic plan, we had a goal, it was one-hundred percent high school graduation. That moved to a four-year strategic plan with the four initiatives that I already con and an accountability metrics I measured and will be coming up and talking more about. We had three separate high schools, they were very distinct. We didn't share students, we didn't actually share courses. We had a lot of different courses and different codes for them, different ways to get different credit for the same course, in fact, things that we don't always talk about sometimes. But we did, and now we have coordinated services. Some of our students literally are going to both schools during their day, someone to do something within the pathways, for example, or someone to do project-based learning. And Abigail is my model for, Abigail, go ahead. Go ahead, say, let a little louder in there, and so everybody can hear you, Abigail.
I go to Cedar, and then I go to Choice, and then I go to New Market.
Thank you for taking my phone call last night, Abigail, to get you to say that, just right on time. But that's just, that's just what's going on here. There's so many good stories, and Abigail's providing it, because that's what you want, right, Abigail? You want some of these different experiences. You crafted that, and so that's what we're able to do. Really proud of the high school staff at each of the schools working together, because it's not so easy. You have different cultures, different expectations, different course catalogs, and so when you do that work, again, the students benefit, and Abigail's our model here. Books were unleveled, and they were also dated. A lot of students don't necessarily like to read things that are usually out of date. They like things that are more updated and that are aligned to their own interest and their own reading level. So now we have over, spent over a hundred thousand dollars in books purchased and are read. We have books just flying out the door, you can see it. I mean, there's just so much, I was in the library today at SHS, because I was meeting with the staff, I mean, they just already have a whole bunch of new books out there to keep interest and up, because kids are just going through volumes and volumes of books. I mean, books are now in kids' heads, literally, as they walk down the hallway, as I was with Director Dale at OMS earlier today, I mean, there's multiple kids, they get their book baggies, but they also do bring them at lunch. I mean, that's where we're, like, this is cool. At least it's a super, from a super tennis perspective sometimes, I get that. In affectual professional development, a lot of things, a lot of the teachers' union really was coming to me as a collective bargaining, saying, hey, we want better professional element, seems kind of like fly-by-night in many ways, wasn't coordinated, maybe year-to-year at best, but we've built out a multi-year platform focused on really a lot of the things that are going to help our learners. You can see it when you go inside the classrooms, they're very engaged, they do tons of things, a lot of really, like, fun things for the students, because they're learning from each other, a lot of staff present to other staff, and then we do have our TOSA model to provide coaching for our novice staff, which I think is really. I just want to touch also on adult learning principles. Why the coaching is important? Because over ninety percent of the learning that adults do, that they apply, comes through coaching, not sitting through a session. And I'm sure many of us can think about that, if you're in the training, you're like, it's hard to remember all the things. It's totally a different experience if you get ongoing coaching and helping out, just like the students, right? It's really better when my teacher sits with me and goes over this with me and worked me through, touches base with me later on than it is like, hey, let me talk to you for twenty-five minutes, get this information, and then you're good to go. I can see the students are rolling their, I guess, no, you don't want to be told, you want to be taught. And that's how we've changed, that's literally the experiences you can see in our classrooms. Very proud of our educators and our building leaders, because they've been doing that work together. And then a lot of rollover budget and staffing in the summer, we did most of our hiring in the summer, it's a real problem, rollover budgeting was some of our problems, that's why when Clinton puts up those graphs, and you can see, here's our planned budget versus what is ultimately our end fund balance, we want to do that, that's just smart accounting. So with it, have you seen these numbers? Yes, Amy said, yes, I think Amy said that already earlier today. And I think they're just, I think it's been a bit a little delayed, we've had really good things going on here in the Shelton School District, but for this, this is just that year, where a lot of people are starting to look up and go, yeah, I've heard a lot of really good things here. Our educators are really working hard, our students are working really hard, and we're increasing our literacy scores, ninth grade on track, attendance and our discipline going down. A lot of other districts are having a struggle of just getting any growth, right? And I think it's a testament that we've been working really hard on a narrow focus, we can't be everything to everyone, but these are really important things and benchmarks most districts measure and attain to, and I think that's super powerful for us. So it's just our smarter balance assessment, that's a state assessment, these are some of the benchmark scores for ELA percentage met. So when you have things here particularly, and you can see in twenty-twenty-two in third grade, you know, only a quarter of our third graders meeting standard in reading and writing, that, to me, is embarrassing. We've done a lot of work on that, even in twenty-twenty-four, we had up to forty-three percent. We had a little step back, I know why. In particular, we've identified what the challenge was, and we're working to address it, and that's going to happen, you don't always have a straight line to progress, or sometimes some dips. We will experience that, but our ultimate trajectory line needs to keep continuing. I really do expect us, within the next couple of years, to have over fifty percent of our third graders meeting standard in reading and writing. That'd be really good for a district like ours. Most, I'll get a little bit more into literacy in a minute. The middle grades have been really tough, I'm going to highlight that, I'm actually going to go a little bit more in-depth for you in a minute on that as well. And then tenth grade, hey, you had forty-nine percent, but then forty-three, forty-three, and now we're back up to forty-nine. SHS in particular, I would like to call out, they've had a, man, I'm challenged about what the exact number is, but they had eight percentage point increase in ELA scores just this last year, and you can see that in that environment, for sure. Navey is like, I was part of that, all right. So we're number one in the state for early literacy growth, so what does that mean? It really means that since COVID, which school districts across the nation and here in Washington State had the most consistent growth year-end to year about growing the literacy rate for students, and that's us, we're number one in it. I mean, when you can do something like moving from twenty-five percent to forty-three percent, that's really good. When we have seventy percent free reduced, twenty-six of our students qualify for multilingual services, right? And I think we're now close to sixteen percent for students who qualify for special education. You know, we've gone from when literally one cohort, I think in twenty-twenty-two, only one student who qualified for multilingual services met standard. Now we had seven, and then I bet we double that. I mean, you're going to see some really incredible things, that's the direction we're moving, that's how we're going to close these gaps. So I think that's really great, I mean, number one out of two-hundred-and-ninety-five districts. Lot of work, lot of focus. Why does that matter? Just wanted to really highlight, I want to double down, I know maybe the board might use to this, I don't know, you know, like, when I say why third-grade reading and writing is so important? Well, it's flat over the, since COVID, it's been flat across the United States. So typical third grader, what they can experience for growth in reading and writing, they can expect to have a flat growth. That means there's really, across the United States, they're not making progress in their reading and writing skills. That is actually holds for Washington State, you can see it there, point-two percent, that's flat, right? But us, for us, when you think about flat, we're not only, we went from twenty-five percent all the way to forty-three percent in that time period. That's really incredible, and we have readers and writers all over our schools. But students who aren't proficient in reading and writing in third grade are four times more likely to drop out of high school. Not a surprise, not a surprise at all, right? Got to have those foundational skills. Students who read and write at third grade, they shift from learning to read to reading to learn, right? You got to have, I mean, if you don't know how to read, you're just so focused on reading, and then you're missing all that other content in critical grade levels, and our data bores that out. Our data does bore that, and I'll show you that in a minute. And then fostering level literacy is just empowering, really, our students to choose their own pathway, do their own things. They're more educated and able to access more information, and sometimes it's very technical, even if you're in welding, there are technical guides. If you're Mike Byers Auto class, yeah, there's some technical guides that you're going to have to be able to do to fix whatever, transmission or even putting on the brakes, like you're in all the technology now with those, whatever, Aztec pads that they put with the cars to read them and figure out what the problems are, right? Like, so there's no escaping it, folks, you do need to learn how to read and write, and we're doing that here in the Shelton School District. But what does that mean for some of our recent ethnicity here, just a little background? So for third grade, you can see those scores are up from twenty-three, even from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-five, things are going to dip a little bit. Students who identify as white went down a little bit this last year, but if you have two or more, then you're up, you're over double, just over a two-year period. So tenth grade, you can see pretty progress, steady progress moving up, ELA scores, that's great. Seventh grade, you can see that they're really low, you can see that that is an area of focus, and you're kind of like, well, why? Like, what is that? Where were those sixth and seventh graders at five years ago? Online? Do you know what it's like to learn online, to know how to read? Not so easy, right? That's really difficult to teach reading when you don't have them in front of you. Students are social learners, especially really young ones. And so I really, you know, that's just a really tough thing for us, and I know I talked to the other districts here in Mason County, that's a tough age group. We did have a lot of growth coming in from fifth to sixth grade, but our seventh graders last year, who are now eighth grade, have some real challenges. So we've been really working on it, doubling down, changing some of our models, and so for us, especially for those students who are well below grade level in reading, we just, starting in the summer and into the fall, did a deep data dive, and what we realized that a lot of students were flatlining in their own growth, and so we noticed that they're not in the right reading book, and then we're not teaching them more higher reading skills than they can be taught. So we're going to make some adjustments now, it's like a do-now, literally, when I say that, like, we started last week, and every day we're going to be working on this so that when we get to the beginning of December, kids will have truly their destroyed book, and when teachers are conferring with them, can ask them questions and talk about literary elements that are more aligned to where they're at developmentally. So it's good news, I think that's the really good news. A lot of our students are in good reading and getting, if you are nearing grade level, no matter what grade, if you're approaching grade level standard, we seem to be doing really well by those students, pushing them over. The ones that are far below, multilingual services, or IEPs, those are the students that we are having to work more on, and our approach needs to adjust to have more rigor to it where it wasn't appropriate, but can do better. So let's talk about exclusion actions, so those are suspensions or expulsions, as people would know them. We've had a seventy-seven percent decrease over the course of this strategic plan, we're down to two-hundred-and-one. I feel like we're, that's pretty much where we're going to land, I don't think we're going to, we'll probably go up, we're down about thirty suspensions, we don't do a lot of expulsions. So I feel like this is kind of our sweet spot, you're going to have things where students make mistakes and go home, regroup, and come back. Our suspensions are a lot less long in duration, that's for sure. So we want to teach them, and we want natural consequences, and sometimes that is going home, especially for more severe situations. Other situations, we want natural consequences, you tear something down, well, then you're going to have to pay back to the community by cleaning some things up and rebuilding, right? And that may be a lot of time, that may not make some students so happy, but as we say, you know, that's love and logic, right? It's some love and some logic to it. I love you so much that I'm going to have you do what I need you to do to make amends to this community, right? Discipline, so let's do some comparisons, so people ask me this all the time, like, what is it like us versus other like districts? So when I say like districts, I'm talking about districts that are similar in size, as well as I'm talking about districts that have a free and reduced lunch number around ours, which is seventy percent again, and a multilingual population that is somewhere higher. Ours is going to be higher than any, like, any of our comparables, just to put us in that zone. Twenty-six percent's a lot, even more than the ones from Eastern Washington, which I think surprises a lot of people. So going back, twenty-one, twenty-two, so that's the dart bar, you can see the percentage of students suspended or expelled out of your entire population. So it was, you know, five-point-five percent in twenty-one, twenty-two for District A, five-point-eight percent for District B, four-point-two for District C, and for us it was five-point-two. So we're not far off, we're probably right the average, right? All the way back then. But what happened since then? Ours went down, but what happened to everybody else's? There's one up. And they, we took a very proactive model, and you can see it when you come inside your schools. Yes, I always get these questions, I have all those things, I think there's this thing called social media and Shelton Talks, people put things on there. All right, so you put things on there about students who made mistakes, that isn't going to happen here in forever. That's been going on my entire twenty-five-year career. Kids are going to make mistakes, sometimes really bad mistakes, but, and they may be very salient, they may be something that people can see or in the hallway, you know, sometimes kids just lose it in a hallway and become explosive. I'm pretty sure most people know about some of the students and the families we serve here, they can be high-needs, there's a lot of things going on for some of our families. And when that stresses, and they can come, and students will manifest those behaviors, instead of punishing them, again, our job is to teach them, and teach them how to redirect that. And we've been taking a lot of our time to do that, really teaching those social skills, really providing structured routines, really engaging kids in lessons, problem-solving, and building relations with them and their families. That is hard work that's been going on, and it pays. I know Director Dale, today, we were at OMS, I know I've gone to other schools with other staff, you can see it at play. Doesn't mean that there's not going to be a situation, we saw, we came up on a situation, I explained, I knew that student, and I was like, yeah, that student has disabilities, and it's actually an area they're working on, I know, for that young man. And, but you know what? You can also see him the next day, and he's so polite, and he wants to really try really hard. Sometimes it's going to be a day where he's on, sometimes it's not, maybe so much, because there's a lot of things that carry in. Sometimes it's not maybe so much, because there's a lot of things they carry in, they carry in off of, from their home life. Go ahead, Abigail. Right? And that's, that's the kind of atmosphere we're trying to create, not just with adults to students, but student to student, right? Cause we need the students in leadership. And Navea and I have had this conversation multiple times. Hey, I want to get some help with the bathrooms. I said, oh, me too, me too. I can't chase everyone and I don't know where they get all the babes and all the things. Mostly a, like a vape issue. But if we want to get that issue, there's going to have to be a culture and a peer pressure to not do that. But also an education thing early enough, which I, I want to, I'm working on right now, is to get more um, education to kids that back in at OMS, right? When they're in fifth and sixth grade about drug and alcohol and obviously tobacco use. So that, those are things that help us then. Now, we're being a little reactive, not my favorite situation, but I think we can get there. I think we can get there with the plans that we have. Like I said, all the way back in my beginning, getting the slide, things are built over years. I would love to have this to be the most amazing district that has everything nailed down and we got it and it's predictable if we were truly well-funded. And uh, for us to make sure that we can provide anything we want for the students, but that's going to have to be built over time and we are on that journey. So I just want to call that out. It's one of the key things that I hear about and I see that is posted. Yes, there's going to be students who are hard to have behavior issues. Yes, we're going to work on it. We've decreased those. I just know that we're still going to have them. Office referrals, uh, down 58% over three years. I think that, that number will continue to go down um, because more things are getting prevented right inside the classroom. Um, so when you build a relationship, you got structured routines, things are predictable. A lot of our students do respond very well to that and they have. So that's good. And students like our student representatives being able to engage other kids, help them out when they're having a bad day also makes a difference. Attendance, uh, so attendance has gone up over the last couple of years. That's good news. Uh, bad news on my next slide, sorry. So let's do a comparable to other districts. So all the way back in 21, 22, uh, the percentage of students who have two or less absences per month, 54% in District A, 55 in B, 66 in District C, 44 in Shelton. So this is where we started lower than our comparables, but you can see that we've had really strong growth that equals or even exceeds some of the other comparable districts. So we've been doing really hard work. I know our educators are. But every time I talk to them, they're always like, it's really hard to sometimes to get these kids to come to school all the time. And we have a lot of kids that miss 30, 40, 50 days out of a school year. That's hard. So we're working on it. And you're like, well, I, and in, in our data, this, this so far this school year is pretty flat, to be honest with you. Um, so we're going to double down, we're going to talk about some strategies this month, make some, some uh, strategic changes in adjusting, using the data to try to get students to, we're never punishing, we're always trying to do outreach and welcoming students. It's just sometimes that challenge can be real and there's a lot of things usually behind it for why students don't come to school. I wish it was easy and I know uh, the board's asked some really good questions at the, um, when kids are, uh, staff representing at the SIPs. You can hear everybody's focused on it, so we'll keep working on it. It is, it is hard work. It's an area where we're really trying to focus on and do better. But we have success stories like Kai at Bordeaux. He missed a couple. He's missed like two years in a row, he missed like 50 days, like 51 in 2022. I think it was almost the same number the next year. But uh, this last year, 12, missed 12 days and met standard in third grade on his um, reading, writing section of the Smarter Balance Assessment. So um, we do need you to come. Does benefit them when they're here. Missed his school that many days is hard to build a relationship, but this young man worked uh, really hard and has a job. One of our key things was to get a student job, so he had purpose, a little bit more purpose. And it's one of the things that worked out very well for him. All right, ninth grade on track, uh, almost 10% up on that. I think we're definitely going to exceed that this year. Uh, we have our freshman academy, we've got orientation experiences, building a better culture, we have better support network if you're not on track. Um, I mean, it's just so many things going on. We've heavily invested. It was one of the key areas when we built the strategic plan, maybe Director Davidson remember hearing that, like, transition night, high school is really scary and really tough. And our data said that. I mean, so changing that experience and how kids get supported has yielded really good results. That's one of those things where, oh, yes, in three years, when you see the graduation rate, it will reflect that. Cause we know that when students have six or more credits at the end of their freshman year, way more likely to graduate uh, high school on time with access and opportunity. So our graduation rate just slightly up. I think the number hasn't come out from last year. I think it's going to go down. My story again is mostly because we have highly expanded open doors. Our open doors program is at choice. It's there, it serves students for who have uh, want to getting a, a GED, get a GED or a high school diploma. It's very personalized, very flexible hours, uh, just really trying to help some students. A number of those students have not been enrolled in public schools since COVID or have a very checkered history about attendance um, and engagement with public schools. So that program is really nice to get them in. At the same time, you're not going to have an on-time graduation rate. So that's one of those things where the statistics don't tell the whole story and I want to make sure that we tell that story on it. Graduation rate is really important for us. Um, and I'm going to dive this a little bit more into that, why that is. So let's see that. So uh, a lot of students usually, um, graduation rate uh, back in 2022, uh, for a year was 78.8%. But if you give them a little bit more time and they need some more things, it climbs up to 83%. Uh, well, if you look at the class of 2023 here, goes from 84% to 87.5%. And now, you know, we keep creeping with 2024. I don't have all the numbers, but um, 81, 81% to 84%. So you know, the four-year rate keeps, is helping us and with less number of years needed afterwards to get their diploma. So those are the good things. And the, the table on the right tells a little bit of that story about uh, withdrawn or re-enrolled um, and unknowns. So we have a number of students, as you can see here, that we have uh, less, we have still a high number of kids that withdraw, but less students are re-enrolling, which is a problem, and unknown. So I don't know where they always go. We don't, we can't track them. They might have just dropped out. And so, because we get information if they go and enroll in another school anywhere in the United States. So that's a number of i- unknowns and then 15 dropouts. So we're having this issue where we're graduating more, having a harder time keeping them and re-enrolling them. Um, but we are able to, at the same time, those have been gone for a long time, able to pull them back and get them into uh, open doors. All right. Talked about the academies and pathways, really good. Over a hundred internships last year. We had eight students uh, participating this last month uh, with the county. So thank you, Mason County, for taking in our students. Um, nice to have experiences, including in the like, the permitting office, for example. Um, and so um, they're getting a whole wide range of experiences, kind of going through finance, so on and so forth about how it works. I personally think they're really good exchanged because our students get a chance to see the bigger world and how things apply. But at the same time, our employers in this county and in the region can also see about such the sharp skills our students have. One of the complaints I got when I hear is like, they're not showing up on time, they can't give me eye contact, they don't have some basic skills to fill out an application. I go, well, we're going to work on that. And we have worked on it and it's showing up. And I hear that consistently, that we're doing better with that from our local employers. We have students, no matter what, some of their, their challenges, we reach out and we wrap around our students. Uh, here's a story of Bethany. She comes around, she's, we got her back on track. Again, that's the advantage of having three distinctive high schools can meet the needs of our students fluidly. And then um, with uh, Shelton Promise, so go tuition free. So if you didn't know, uh, you know, stories like this are really nice and it's really nice to have our relationship with Evergreen State. You can go tuition free if you graduated last year or this year. Last year, um, uh, two years ago, uh, we graduated, only three students went from Shelton to Evergreen State. Three. This last year, 53. That's a lot. And they're cool because it's, I just get these updates. They're hanging out together, they're coming, they're on a little Shelton cohort, helping each other, navigating college, helping each other with life. Um, that's the magic sometimes about, you know, getting together in college. So it's really neat. Um, and I love to hear those stories um, for sure. Again, Shelton Promise goes on for this year. This will be the last year, this is a two-year grant that the state ledge funded. Just talking to um, the president of Evergreen State. So he's working on some ways to continue providing some tuition free or reduced tuition for students coming from Shelton. I'll let you know when we learn more about that, uh, so that can continue. Hopefully maybe in the state ledge, we'll decide to continue to fund it. Such a successful program for our students uh, coming from um, the Shelton School District. So this is my last slide before I, I take questions. Sorry this gets long, but I want to make sure we have a lot going on here. Here's our continuous improvement efforts uh, right here. Um, I already talked about the books. Uh, we are uh, working on our updated approach to math. It's going to be a long journey. Um, any kind of different approach to math requires uh, different materials and also more professional development, which we're short on. Uh, but it doesn't mean we're going to just stop. So we'll be ready as we keep increasing our overall uh, general fund balance. Hopefully the state continues to think about funding K-12 education more so we can do that. I think it's kind of the sad, sad state of affairs when school districts don't have enough money for a new math approach to be more effective, but that's just me and my own being straight and direct. Uh, we weren't clearing the hallways and you like surpasses or our passing systems that we've been using at the schools. Uh, the secondary schools have gone really well, so we're going to continue working on that. Uh, there's always a handful of students that we have to get on our, what we call behavior support plan, working on that so that they can get to class where they need to be. And I know the students appreciate that because I've heard from them too, when we help them get to class. So they're not a distraction for them either. Reinvest, re-envisioning special education, some things that we need to work on um, within special education to better serve our students, get better outcomes right now. Uh, outcomes don't always look so good for them, um, including around discipline. So it's something the data bores out and so we've already taken some steps to address that, um, starting with their school administrators. Uh, increase college and high school, that's changed. So a lot of people are used to advanced placement or AP courses. College and high school is a nice way to um, attract students who are like, I just want a straight college credit. I don't want to have to take like a really hard AP test. Like, I'm just going to be honest, those are really hard tests. I get it. Lots to study for, you can do this. So it's kind of meeting families and students halfway without college and high school. Uh, most of that's through Central Washington University. Already talking about Shelton Success, we'll keep uh, working on that, closely monitoring enrollment budget, uh, no lie, keep working on that. I think I've said this, I just want to really call this out. Districts are increasingly experiencing a decrease enrollment. The birth rate in the state is going down. That means enrollment is going to go down for almost everyone, except for if you build a thousand houses maybe here and they're more affordable, that might get us some more students. Fingers crossed, uh, could help us. Share facts on the renewal levy. Uh, yep, just going to continue to work on that and then continue to celebrate our students. We have amazing kids. Check us out. I, I am so excited about all the things they do. Um, if you ever like wonder like, oh, those, you know, I know some people that are out there, community are maybe not be in touch with a teenager. Try them out. Ask them some questions. I think you'll be impressed uh, about all the amazing things they know and all their wonderful thoughts. Um, I know I'm continuously impressed. I love talking to our students. Um, I do almost every day and so um, I thank them, I think, I thank our community, I think our staff, I think the board. Uh, we're doing really good things here. We got a lot of work to do, but we're definitely on the right track. So with that, I'll take questions.
Anybody got any questions?
Not so much a question, just a celebration of some of those significant numbers. The um, increase in literacy is, is a big deal. And so that's statewide, that number that we were, how did they calculate that? Is that just basic um, off a particular test or how's that calculated?
Yeah, it's, it's third grade. So the smart, the state test, smarter balance assessment, how did you do? And so that growth um, is really about um, year to year for three years. And so were you able to get growth with that population or not? And there's only two districts, us and Silicon, we're the only ones who consistently had growth that was three, over three to 4% ultimately on your trend line. That's really what that means.
I just want to echo something you shared. I got to visit OMS today and I, I got to see the, the really exciting part, students learning together, a really engaging teacher. I do not recall his name, but everybody's eyes were on him, they're working through literacy. And I did have the opportunity to see a student who was having a hard day and watched the discipline there. And so I know for a lot of parents out there that don't get to walk the halls, one, they can call you and set up an appointment. But the halls of OMS were not lined with students that shouldn't be there. They were in their classes. It was so organized, so um, watching the students walk in, in line, back to classrooms, just great things happening. I got to see at that particular school that reaffirms everything you just shared here. So I appreciate that.
I don't have any questions. It was a lot of information and I really appreciate you going through all of that. And I'm glad that uh, Mason Web TV actually captures this in case anybody like myself wants to even go back through, because there really is a lot of information and a lot of great things are going on at the school. And it does break down, you know, the timeline of going from, I was on the board when the goal was 100% graduation. And we had community members that would say, that's really kind of unrealistic. How do you expect to have everybody graduate? But that's always the goal, is to make sure that every kid does graduate and has all the opportunities that they can have after high school. But then that, you know, the wonderful inclusion of community and teachers um, to do the strategic plan. And now we are seeing all of that hard work that has gone into the strategic plan and building literacy. And like Director Dale said, the celebration of seeing our scores. Um, you know, it's not a small thing to be number one in growth on the smarter balanced assessment. It's not just some random, you know, cherry picked data. So uh, I think that that's all, you know, really wonderful. I do also like that we have multiple opportunities for students, that we have Cedar, that we have Shelton High School, that we have Choice, that we have the Open Doors Program. I know that that's going to cause that graduation rate to go down, but it's pretty incredible that, I know the work that the administration has done and staff to find students who really kind of exited uh, the public school system or any school once COVID hit. And now they're working to get that education where they can then have better opportunities. So I appreciate all of the work that has been done. It was a lot of information, so there's a lot to process there, but thank you for the presentation.
And I, I cut a lot out.
I'm sure you did. Yeah. There's, there is a lot.
Thank you for the presentation and it's just really exciting to take all the school improvement plans and the scores and the discussions that they have provided us over the last few weeks and just kind of have them all wrapped up in here and get your perspective. And I hope people at home are listening.
Andy is correct. Uh, I meet with Superintendent Jesse Weekly-ish and um, he's leaving a lot out. There's a ton of other stuff going on out there. A lot of it kind of works together. There's some nuancey type of stuff. But uh, a lot of good things really are happening. Obviously there's been speed bumps along the ways, that's going to be a thing. Um, just like going to the gym, if you want to get better, sometimes it's going to be, you're going to be sore. Um, and we've experienced that just like anything else. So thank you very much for the presentation. It's in line with everything else I can see. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd also like to echo the sentiment that I do think it's really cool that Shelton School District has these three high schools. You know, as somebody who goes to Cedar High School, I think it's important also for the community to recognize that having three high schools open is very expensive. It's a lot of facilities to manage, it's a lot of staff to hire, and things like that really can only be possible if the levy passes. That's kind of where the levy comes in handy, because if it weren't for that, it'd be very difficult. I mean, even now, it's very difficult to properly fund all of the three different high schools. So without the levy, it really is like taking away a crutch that the district has been relying on for decades at this point. Because it says Clinton Sherman was saying, it's been approved for more than 25 years. So just like to get that out there.
I also want to say the, with the having the multiple schools, it's really great. But I also, I'm a student who participates in Running Start, and I want to say that that program has been incredibly beneficial for me, especially considering the amount of students who are on free and reduced lunch, who probably can't afford that extra two years of height of college. And I know personally that getting my associates when I graduate this year is going to take a huge burden off of me. And things like the levy and stuff are what makes those like programs possible. And I don't think I would have such a successful high school career without having that program. And I just think that should be known in the community.
I agree with all of that.
Well, I, I just want to say thank you so much. I, I know that, you know, right now, people are trying to build trust and understanding, you know, public education and government entities in and of themselves. But like I like to say, lean in, be, be part of the solution. It's, it is really, it is really difficult with the means we have to get to all the needs that we have. It's hard to look at some of our students and knowing all the things they could really benefit from and knowing that we can't provide all of it. There are obviously limits, but we will try, continue to try as hard as we can, especially for those who are neediest. So I appreciate it, and I look forward to sharing more good stories with you, the board, student reps, our community very soon. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to the report from the Student School Board Representatives, and we'll start off with Alan.
So it's been a while since I've been here. So first thing I'd like to open up with is a report on our haunted house. It went so, it went really good, actually. The students had a lot of fun setting it up and playing their roles. We had some students from Choice show up and help us fill in some positions for scaring actors. And I saw, I don't even know how many people I saw, there was a lot of people, there are dozens of families, community members, and I think they were all successfully scared. We had, we had the principal of Choice and Cedar, Bruni, show up with, with all of his kids, and I can't imagine what it was like walking through a haunted house with, with that many kids. It was also a pretty successful fundraiser. We were able to fundraise over $400 after, in profits. So that's not including all the money that we put in. And so that's going to go towards having fun as a senior class and building a lot of a community together. Seniors are also, they've, they've been really proactive in filling out their applications for Evergreen, the college, not the elementary school. And they've also been filling out their FAFSA too. We have a lot, a lot of the senior classes done so already. And another class that's mostly made up of seniors, but not entirely, Human Anatomy. Our teacher, Colleen, they were able to get in contact with a prosthetics doctor specialist person based in, I think it was Olympia. And so we're going to have, we're going to have her come in and teach us about prosthetics. And in that class right now, we're actually designing prosthetics. So far, we've got two groups working on upper body prosthetics, so like think arm, and two groups working on legs. So if we had one more group, we could make a torso and make a whole person. So I think that's pretty cool. And today, actually, some of the ambassadors got together at Cedar on our Working Wednesday to make our Friends of Cedar buttons with the new and updated 2025 design, which is of course designed by one of our students, a senior.
Thanks, Nevea.
I'll start with today. So we had our Veterans Day Assembly today, which was put on almost completely by ASB and leadership. We got to see our band perform about four songs, and they're getting really good. If you've heard the Shelton High School band, they're pretty, they know their stuff. We also tried a new engagement tactic. We had a little game show that was based on Family Feud, and it was Veterans Day trivia, and it really got the crowd engaged, which is something we struggle with occasionally at assemblies. A lot of kids tend to zone out, especially during like serious assemblies like Veterans Day, even though they shouldn't. But it got people engaged, and also turns out our students know a lot more about Veterans Day than we thought. Our NJRTC is very skilled, and they were able to present the colors and rest the colors today, and that was really amazing to watch. Again, there is a fall play this weekend that Mr. Vaughn did highlight. It's the play that goes wrong, please, if you can make it, please show up. Also, we wanted to highlight our substance abuse counselor, because I feel like she goes unrecognized a lot, but Shelton High School students actually don't really know about her, and we want to just kind of give her a shout out. So there's that. And there is a presentation that will be happening with Mr. Kipper on Tuesday, talking more about that. So I'm sure we'll hear about that at the next meeting. Interhigh Communication, we have an interhigh ASB representative who would like to connect with the other schools' ASPs, if possible, all the way down to like OMS. So if we could get some communication with that, that'd be amazing, starting probably with Cedar and Choice. Our DECA just got back from their fall learning conference, which went really well. We actually went from taking about 10 people last year, and we took 38 students this year, which is a lot of growth. And we are getting ready for our area or regionals competition to see if we qualify for state, and it's looking really promising this year. Our FFA is back from Nationals, where I would like to highlight again that there was a student chosen from Washington. He was the only student picked to go with the state officer team to go to Indianapolis for Nationals, and that was Lane Stony. And I just think that's really powerful and really cool to highlight. We had a senior class meeting today with Jostens, which had all the information about graduation and getting caps and gowns, and they threw some tassels actually out at people, some light-up rings, which he always brings with him whenever he gives us his Jostens announcements. And we had a couple of students who got to try on caps and gowns, got to see a lot of our senior class merch. And we have a couple of deals actually that are happening, so you can get your cap and gown for only $62 if you order before December 10th, which I think is pretty neat. And we have a lot of high school, like college visits here at Shelton High School, and those have been really beneficial. I know we had UW, like I think that was last week, we've had Wazoo, Whitworth has come, and we have so many more planning to come. We are introducing our freshmen to the different academies at SHS. I know I got to sit in at one of their most recent presentations where they were teaching the freshmen how to make caramel roses for culinary, and that was pretty engaging. Tomorrow, they have a little agricultural like experience, and I get to be a part of that, which is going to be pretty neat. They have decided that our senior prom will be in the sub at Sheldon High School, which sounds a little shocking at first, but they're going to put the budget towards making sure the decorations are really good, and all the seniors who go to prom will get a little gift basket and all that stuff to commemorate their senior year. And there is ninth grade, the freshmen did their commitment to graduate recently, which I heard went really well. So, yeah.
All right, Abigail.
I'm Abby from Choice, and in the Pathgrade Program, students have been working on job scales, community gardening, cooking, and something safety. They have been volunteering in the community, Open Doors did their stamp test, making Whoville for the winter celebration. On November 18th, the middle school class is going to the creek to P, for PBLS. Middle School ELA met an author and learned about their writing, and Choice is going to have Pitcher Day, they're going to have their first ever book fair, middle school is going to do the yearbook photos, and all the programs are coming together on the last Thursday of the month to have a Friends Thanksgiving.
Thank you. That's good stuff from all three of you. Thank you very much. Moving on to number six, the consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at that?
I motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there we go. Consent agenda is approved. Onto item number seven, 7.01, the proposed revised policy number 2195, academic acceleration, Adrian Minery. This will be the second reading and recommend approval.
Good eve, this one? Good evening. Good evening, Board President Wielander, other esteemed board members, student board representatives, and Superintendent Jesse. I am here to bring forth the recommended, proposed adjustments to policy number 2195, and then the other ones that went, that then unfolded after that, including procedures with 2190. We are just bringing the policy here, but, so to be in line with the updated RCW and then the model WASDA policy. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, if you have any.
Did anybody have any questions? It's pretty much just in line with the current recommendation, so I would take a motion.
A motion, we adopt proposed revised policy number 2195, academic acceleration.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there you go. It's updated.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Now, 7.02, proposed revised policy number 1111, oath of office. And if you look at that in your board packet, they added some language in addition to supporting the constitution, the US and the state of Washington, it'll also be the Washington state laws, and that would be the only thing that has changed is just that one, one sentence added. So, does anybody have any questions about that one?
Just to clarify the addition there, if somebody's wondering, why did we add that in?
It's just an update in the, in the laws.
So that reflects an update in the Washington state law? Yeah. That was it.
Good. Yeah, we can do this one for approval unless anybody's got anything that we need a major rewrite on.
I've seen it.
I motion for approval.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we've updated policy 1111. Now, proposed resolution 2509, authorizing levy election on February 10th, 2025. Mr. Clinton Sherman.
Great. Couple of things, I have an updated resolution that I'll need three signatures on, because one goes to the county, one goes to the attorney, and then we keep one on file. But one of the things that's important around not just setting the rate is the ballot title itself. So I want to walk through that really quickly. You only get 75, somewhere in this section, after the word would, you get 75 words from there on for the rest of the ballot. So the substantive change or part of the ballot title itself is this proposition would fund operations not fully funded by the state, including classroom teachers, nurses, librarians, safety, security, technology, career and technical education, athletics, arts, music, after-school programs, ADA access, roof repair, heating, transportation, and authorize levy the follow taxes on the school district. So that's a lot of words, but that's what the ballot will look like when it comes to them in the mail in February. So that's part of the, it's a big substantive part of the resolution with the rate at 236 that we talked about earlier, with the amounts. And again, I wanted to redo what the local tax rates are happening, the, that yellow line is the bond rate, and that'll continue to go down over time. Yeah, just, it's important to understand that calculation as well, that even though your taxes are, will remain the same at this new rate, we're, that we're, sorry, you're approving a rate at 236, that rate will still, your overall score will still go down because the bond rate will be going down over time. So when you look at your full tax statement from local taxes, it'll be going down over time. And that's all that I have.
And the specific ballot angles will all be reviewed by the, our attorney and everything?
Already has been.
Okay, super.
With 75 words, it's a lot of refining and reduction. You kind of put in everything you want, and then pare it all down to how can you capture the most things with the least amount of words? That's really how it works.
Okay. Any other questions?
Of course.
I would take a motion.
I move that we approve the proposed resolution number 2509, authorizing a levy election on February 10th, 2026. This says 2025.
Yep, it does.
On the agenda, but I'm assuming that we mean 2026.
I will second that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay, on to item number eight, board member comments. We'll start down at the end with Director Dale.
Thank you again, as always, for public showing up. I appreciate public comments. Thank you to parents who came to support their athletes. In particular, thank you volleyball team and coaches and cross country. That was incredible, especially here in that GPA for your cross-country state attendees was amazing. Thank you Superintendent Jesse for, there's a lot of information there, but I appreciate the in-depth and the look at where we are as a school district. Just general thank yous to our teachers out there every day doing all of this work. Thank you to our high school representatives, all three. Appreciated the comments and the questions. Thank you for participating in this. That's it.
Director Gilmore.
I'm just going to ditto those instead of repeating them all. They're very well put. Thank you. And that's all I've got. Next week, we're going to the Washington State School Board Association Conference, and I'm really excited to learn more about schools, engage and network with other school districts, and hear about, you know, last year we did a lot on budget and solutions and levies, and it was really informative and really helpful, and I enjoy doing those, that work with, with all of you. So look forward to seeing you next weekend.
Director Davidson.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, especially all of you who decided to stay until the very end as well, too. We do appreciate the public comments, always welcome those, and it's nice to hear that there is a school play going on this weekend, because for, sometimes we just miss some of those announcements. So really appreciate that and all of your student reports that help keep us informed about what is actually going on in the schools. I loved seeing the athletic recognition. I'm a little partial to that volleyball team. I think that their GPAs, if we had known those, was probably really high as well, too. It's been really special watching them come together as a team. I was down there last night as well in Vancouver, and it was wonderful to see our athletic director, Scott Chamberlain, down there rooting the team on, as well as a lot of parents, friends, family. And they'll be right back down there tomorrow night. And it's just really exciting to see a team come together, and it's, it's been really special, and it's wonderful that our, our cross-country team has done as well as they have. And I saw that our girls swimmers, they won districts as well. So there's a lot of really exciting athletic, you know, things going on. I think boys tennis did really well as well, too. So there's so many things to recognize with our student athletes, and, and just like you said, Superintendent, they really are student athletes. They are balancing many times, you know, heavy course load and difficult class work, and they are doing practices that are three hours long or more, and they're having to balance all of that out. So I do also want to recognize all of those coaches who spend all of that time working with all of our students, because that, it just really is a wonderful relationship that they have. I appreciate the budget updates and going over all of the different levy scenarios, and that is always difficult, because we do want to be really mindful about what we're putting on our community, but it's very, very important for the support of our students. And I do very much believe in the strong schools, strong community. They are very, much go together. So appreciate all of that. Thank you for your state of the district presentation. There's a lot of really great things going on that are benefiting our students. And I, one of the things I failed to mention in my comments when you were doing the presentation is I really appreciate our community partners and all of those internships that they are giving our students that are hands-on to see if they like that type of career, and also give them, like you said, those skills of, you know, really getting more than just a few hours, but, you know, a real feel for that profession, and if they want to do that, and getting that professional contact with the people that are doing that. and getting that professional contact with the people that are doing that job. So our community partners always appreciate everything that they do. And I am also looking forward to the WASDA conference. Always appreciate that. Congratulations to all of you. And thank, thank you to the school district that helped with our Board of Distinction application. I think that's eight years going on that now. And it really, I think this year, the highlight of that was our literacy and the push for all of that. So that is all of the hard work of everyone in our school district, our staff, our teachers, and all of our administrators. So thank you all for everything you do.
All right. I'll finish it up with the kids down here at the end, the student representatives. One of the things that I love is watching them get better and better at public speaking as the year goes on. Alan, interjected humor. Very good. I did go to the haunted house. I ate enough cookies to not feel well. And there was some dessert that I didn't know what it was, neither did anybody else in the house. But I did take the dare. I ate it. It was very good. Cool that FFA, DECA, all that are going on and doing neat things. My reminder to everybody is, yes, we lean on sports, because statistically, that's where you see that big bump in GPA. But it isn't just sports. It's all of the extracurricular activities, including drama. Go see the play on Friday night. Hopefully, I will be able to make that. One of the things that I heard tonight, and it really bothered me, and it brings up a bigger topic, is right now, in a, in a very politically divisive environment, not just here, but really everywhere in America, if you're wearing shirts, saying things, making signs, remember that you're probably one side of it. I would imagine that there's a South Park shirt out there somewhere in our school district. And right now, if anybody follows South Park, they are the opposite side of whatever Charlie Kirk or anybody might be saying. Confucius says that if you say something and it makes you smile, you probably shouldn't have said it. And when we say and do things to make our own political points instead of bringing America as a whole together, I think that that's dangerous. And divisiveness is not what we need right now. So with that, I hope we get to the bottom of whatever that is. I'm sure it's covered in policy. And that's all I have for tonight. So I would take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. 7:33.